I suppose. Thank you for your flexibility. As you know, the executive order that's in place due to the COVID pandemic allows us to attend meetings remotely if necessary, and I had a commitment out of town. And so we're going to try this chairing thing remotely. If something should happen, if something should happen to the internet connection or something of that nature. I've already spoken with trustee Coth, he's prepared to step in. If the internet connection goes down and that kind of thing, and so the meeting would be able to proceed in my absence. Okay.
Everybody, as you would, Mary Reid asked me, can you just keep it quiet in the room because he has a little trouble hearing. Thank you.
I have trouble hearing normally, but on the camera, it's even worse. So with that, I will ask Ms. Clerk, Ms. Vesquez, can you establish a role, please?
Ms. Soder.
Present.
Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Coles.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Paul Stine.
Present.
Mr. Evans.
Present.
All here.
All right, with that, we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay. Has anybody signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, our first speaker is Brian Dungara.
Hello. My name is Brian, my family and I live in the village of Kansas. I'm here this evening to express my opposition to the visibility screening requirement in the residential bank checking ordinance. This requirement creates financial burden. I am the sole provider for our law enforcement family. So my wife Meg homeschools our children. I work both a full-time and a part-time job to make ends meet. The screening requirement for the ordinance is an unrealistic mandate when everyone is already living in inflation, as it is hard enough to even afford groceries or gasoline. As the ordinance currently stands, the village is applying commercial and business screening standards to residential zoning. Does that mean villages under the impression residents have the same financial abilities as a business? The means of funds between a business and a resident are drastically different. We live on just shy of three quarters of an acre pie-shaped lot. As communicated by the village, neighboring means all neighboring properties surrounding our property in all directions that have eyesight of our rear yard from any portion of their property. That would mean screening two across the street neighbors and 19 rear yard neighbors who looked at a bird's eye view land picture of our lot. Our home is located in the section where no one expenses of their own. So our screening would need to be far reached according to this ordinance requirement. To substantiate the financial burden, I have compiled estimates to satisfy the visibility screening requirement for 10 by 10 chicken run. We have used the guidelines from University of Illinois poultry department for proper base level airflow to maintain respiratory health at the chickens and waste odor. Their studies show a windbreak screening structure should be five to 10 times the distance away is the structure height. I have a handout breaking down the pricing as well as a map illustrating our property and neighboring properties. Just a couple more sentences here. That said, for tree screening, arborvitae's from plant hill nursery and carpenter's bill, including installation, costs $14,000. For lattice fencing, screen lattice fencing from Home Depot without installation would cost $1,800 plus additional permit costs. Other municipalities in Kent County have passed this ordinance for years. Without visibility screening, I've had great success, positive community feedback. To date, there are zero visibility screening requirements for any other residential structures. Lastly, we ask you to please understand the financial weight this screening requirement brings and make this simpler and more achievable for residents. Thank you.
The next speaker is Austin Dungara.
He passes.
He passes. Okay, that's it for tonight, President Reed.
Okay. With that, you see the meeting minutes from June 16, 2022. Again, with the state, with the conversation we had at the board meeting, this is a first crack at what the board had discussed as far as minute keeping. Please review them for any additions, solutions, corrections. And as such, I would entertain conversation at this time about the feelings about how these meetings minutes are presented.
I love it. I commend the clerk who's done a fantastic job. They are concise, thorough. I will change it.
Any other discussion about the minutes, or I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Agreed, agreed.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So.
Mister, Mister President, I believe there's a typo that minutes should be from the, from the.
Look at that. I got all excited about the content. I didn't look at the date.
Well, to be clear, the agenda listing is incorrect, but the minutes that are circulated in the board package are July 7th. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so I will entertain, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 7, 2022. I guess I'll amend my motion, I should say. I already have a first and second. Do I need to redo it, Mr. Schuster?
Give me a second. Second.
Okay, questions, comments, or any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stine.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
I'm staying.
Ms. Soder.
Thank you.
We should pass by eyes one of saying.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, we will have a development presentation for Old Dominion Freight Line, which will be handled by Matthew Nowell, the Director of Real Estate Development for Old Dominion Freight Line. Matt?
There's so many people over here, but I have some materials on who we are. There's also some renderings of buildings. I think you also have pictures of what we're building.
It's behind you on the side.
Okay, okay, great. So I'm Matt Nowell, Director of Real Estate with Old Dominion. Appreciate you guys having us here to present and hopefully have a new home here in Hampshire. So we're an LTL Trucking Company, which is less than loaded, which means that we pretty much pick up pallets from customers and then consolidate it on one trailer. And then I liken it to the airport system. We have 11 break bulk facilities, which are kind of like hubs throughout the country. And we have 250 bike service centers throughout, throughout the country. And some of those are in the line, so they get it, we pick up freight from manufacturers or retail customers. We pick it up, we take it to our service center. And then it gets on a truck and it goes to one of our hubs and then it goes to its final destination. So we'll have probably 80 to 100 truck trips a day. And you know, those will be staggered because they're kind of on schedules like the airport system. And so it won't be hitting your streets all at once. And I also might point out that our trucks are already here. The reason why we want to be here is because we have customers here. So the trucks are already here on their streets. So really, you begin to tax income that somebody else is getting right now with the jobs that we're bringing and whatnot. This will be a 48,000 square foot crawl stock, metal freight terminal with about 6,000 square feet of office as well. We have, starting off about 80 employees and probably around 100. And our drivers and dock workers, I think we're averaging about $85,000, $85,000 a year for our employees. So and bring good jobs to the area. So that's kind of an overview of what we do. Don't know if you guys have any questions or comments?
If you could describe like a typical day, you know, morning into the evening, just to what to expect in the area.
Yeah, so we have P and D drivers that are the pickup and delivery drivers. So they come in typically, you know, around maybe starting at seven o'clock. And then some don't even come in until 10:00, so it's kind of staggered and they go out. Maybe they pick up all the freight from the customers here, then they bring it back. And then we have line haul drivers that come in starting at about eight, eight o'clock. And then they, they come and they come in about 12:00. They're, they're picking up the freight that they picked up earlier. And then they take it out and get to the hubs and they go out to destination and freight store. But and then we also have sales reps that manage facility admin. You know, we have dock workers that are taking the freight from crawl stock eighty feet wide. And so they take the freight from this, this trailer, then they just move it over to the other trailer that's going out. And then they come and pick it up and they take it out.
Can I, because I'm totally understanding and I'm probably using all the wrong terminology. When you say they bring it in, I mean, is it like a, you know, the back of a truck and then another, just the truck engine kind of hooks up to it and takes it, or is it unloading and loading?
It's unloading and loading.
Okay, it is.
So, so it, it, they come in, they back up to the dock. And then they unload it and then they go over and then there's another trailer on the other side of the dock. And then they take it with forklift and take it to the other trailer, other side.
Okay.
And then that gets out.
When does the date end?
Um, yeah, it's pretty much 24/7.
24/7.
Yeah, or 24/6, really Saturday. This will be an in-line terminal, our break bowls, which are, I hope they run 24/7. This will probably be closed Saturday, Sunday morning, then open back up Saturday, Sunday night.
Thank you.
This location is in Hampshire Woods immediately north of 28.
So you the town probably won't see much traffic. You'll probably be dealing with maybe 20 in the total pretty much the whole time, right?
Yeah, and pretty much we, we like the location that's right on 90.
And you know, so we just get right on, a lot of drivers get right on and right off.
Right.
The only drivers we'll have are pickup and delivery drivers that are already on their route.
Right.
If you're on the toll, you'll seal Dominion trucks all the time.
With 24/6 type schedule and knowing where this location is, what kind of sound barriers on there? Or what kind of sound should residents and nearby communities expect from this type of?
You know, with our, what we call our switchers that switch the trailers and stuff that has backup thing. But what you got is where it's muffled, where it doesn't bleed properly. So all of our backup beepers are like that. So really, the only thing you'll hear, you know, we have no idle policy. So we can't, we don't leave our engines sitting there idling. They automatically cut off after, I think it's 30 seconds of idling. And so I mean, it's not very loud.
And then all of the lights, I'm guessing, are directional, like these style lights.
There might be a one, I don't remember if I put a picture in there, but it doesn't bleed all properly.
Okay. Just thinking of the resident, all of a sudden, there's this huge increase in evening lights, maybe road, 2AM noise. Yeah, that's, that's where.
Yeah. So would most of the traffic then be coming through a gas road? Because there's currently no access to it.
Past the 20 to 12, that's right. There would be no access to it.
Okay.
And that's true for the rest of that development also, everything from up in my drive.
Is there a sign there from K dot or anybody? And if it exists, I apologize, have a stoplight, put in a gas.
At some point when we reach the traffic counts, and that would, that could be justified, in fact, funding could be available from the state by doctor that. But at this point, we're not able to list the warrants.
And with the additional 100 or so a day, what is that?
No, in fact, we're looking at two or three more projects that are similar transit companies and freight companies. And it does not appear that we did that. What we actually want to see.
All right, any other questions?
Uh, just what, what are you, what are you hoping to be able to break ground or what's the project plan look like?
We need to fight the biggest split as possible. You know, going through the whole approval process, I don't know what that usually takes depending on the culture, but soon as we get done with that, as long as we bunch up a winner, then we probably wait till the spring. Just to get the spray started. They still haven't closed in the land yet, so once they do that in the next few weeks. In fact, there was recently a 30-day extension closing. Probably be 30 days before we have their application and once we do.
Any other questions? I really appreciate the presentation. I'm sorry I wasn't there in person tonight to meet you, but I hope that we'll meet very soon.
Nice to meet you ever. Resume.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's way too common these days.
I know, I hear you. Thanks so much. At this point.
All right, Mr. Hedges.
Thank you. At this point, we would ask your consideration of a motion to authorize pay estimate number two, which would be the final payment to Peter Baker and Son Company in the amount of $7,078 in 48,000, clearly saying the surfacing project. This would be a total of 141,569,64, approximately $550 under budget.
The contractor made good on the concerns about some, some restoration concerns, Ms. Lyons?
Um, we're still actually working through that, but we substantiated that the bush was dead construction and don't believe that it's Peter Baker's issue to deal with. And then there is a question about the slope. Now in the car way and the slope had to be changed slightly to accommodate the detectable warning bumps that we talked about before. Yes, um, so as you know, we now have ramps that go down to, to meet the street grade. And so the, the slope has changed, but again, it's been deemed mowable. So we do have a meeting coming up between E I, the street department and the residents. But we don't believe that it's going to be an issue related to Peter Baker.
Any other questions for Ms. Lyons or Mr. Hedges about this?
So Public Works and E I have signed off on this, are okay with it?
They both have deemed it mowable and not, the dead bush is not a result of the construction. But we still have to meet with the residents. So we've not completely resolved it.
It's signed up, okay, yes.
With that.
Sorry, I have another question. So I thought we were pulling it until everything was considered resolved with the resident.
Well, at the time, like as I mentioned, it had not been evaluated by E I with respect to like the bush and the slope. The, the resident believed that it was unmowable or not as mowable, which I, you know, I haven't been out there to look at it myself. But in the meantime, both, both our engineers and our street department believe that it is mowable. And again, the bush not the result of the construction. So there's, we just don't feel that it's reasonable to hold a payment against the contract that went. We will have a discussion with the resident, but I don't think that anything's going to be. I mean, if you want to hold it again, that's, that's fine. Until the meeting.
How was it determined? A result of construction from E I or on street?
The bush.
Yeah, because wasn't that part of it, like we, we were going to need them to replace that because they thought it was a part of it? How did they make the determination?
There's a picture of the bush in the background of when the existing sidewalk was removed. And there, there are two bushes at the corner there, one bush is in full, the other bush is already dead. So I mean, it's really clear that that is not the result of the construction. And the dead bush did tip over during the construction project, but again, it was buried dead before.
But there's photographic evidence.
There's photographic evidence, yes. And then you can see that the slope does change. You know, the sidewalk now goes down, so, you know, versus being just straight across and then a curve. Um, so it has changed, but again, the change and the restoration is deemed mowable.
What's the address?
200 June Lane. It's right in the corner.
The only reason I ask that question is because it was brought up at the last meeting as, as the reason why we held the payment. But I'm comfortable with the staff's recommendation and our, and the professional of the professional recommendation of our village engineer and our public works. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number two for final payment to Peter Baker and Son for the amount of $7,078 and 48 cents.
So what? Second.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Paul Stine, hi. Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Ms. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi. Hi.
We should pass.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we now ask your consideration of an ordinance modifying the alcohol, alcoholic liquor regulations for special events licenses. In your package, you have an agenda supplement from Josh Ray. Explain why this is being done to bring the special events licenses into compliance with our other hours of operation.
So if you'll, if you'll humor me, this came as a direct result of a recent liquor commission meeting and Coon Creek applying the way that we were kind of doing liquor licenses didn't make sense in the fact that according to the state, it's up to local control for us to be able to authorize certain times. And ours was not consistent with some of the practices that have been going on around town. The other, the other issue that I have with the ordinance is we define a special event as two days. And so the thought process at the liquor commission meeting was as well, we have to approve the license for the event anyway. So really, the ordinance should read as, as approved by the liquor commission because we're the ones that are authorizing it. It shouldn't specify a special event timeline within the ordinance. And so that was my thought process. So does anybody have any questions about the ordinance as it's presented?
I understand the change at 10:00 AM. Why are we moving it to 1:00 AM from 12:00 AM? I thought, didn't you guys cut off?
It's like that, it cuts at 11:00.
Oh, you guys cut like beer sales at 11:00, right? 12:00, okay.
It doesn't just say hours.
Oh, it's just for the current.
Yeah, so, so really, the, 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 the thing of it is, is that I don't think Coon Creek has an intention to change this. However, in the past, it's been known practice that if there's rain in the middle of the day or something of that nature, or they get a good run going, then they, it's been done in the past where they've continued for a half hour, an hour longer, which is against our ordinance. And so in doing so, I'm sorry.
No, I got you. That makes perfect sense to me.
So, so that, so that's why it's giving them the leniency to, they don't necessarily want to extend to 1:00. But again, if they're going to 12:30 and they're 12, 12 o'clock and it's going good and they want to serve till 12:30, by our ordinance, they weren't allowed to.
Gotcha.
And then as far as the, as far as the 10:00.
Sorry, by the application, no matter who it is for a special event, don't they have to put in the hours and the hours are based? That's the application. So if they said we're going to close at midnight, things are going well and they applied for midnight, even if the ordinance allows till 1:00 AM, it's based on that application, correct?
It's based on the application at the state level, not necessarily the village. So they cannot exceed the state, they, they can apply for whatever time they want at the state, but our ordinance would have to allow it or not allow it. Statement, Mr. Schuster? Then correct me.
I don't understand why there would be a discrepancy in the state. The application to the state shouldn't be different than the application submitted to the village. So it should all, all have a job.
Correct.
The idea here is that you're, you're considering allowing a special event to go to 1:00 AM. If that's what they asked for, if that's in their application and that's what is approved, it's part of their license.
The current ordinance is midnight?
Yes.
So they couldn't ask for 1:00 AM because the ordinance stated midnight?
Correct, correct. Many years past, as you know, trustee Coth, there has been a phone call or two made and the mayor, police chief, or myself would say, okay, scale it to 1:00. But that was not permitted by our ordinance. That's what trust.
So let's just change it.
So if I can ask just one thing then, if our, if our liquor sales then for the event, if it's supposed to end at 11:00, that's for the liquor sales, but the event itself could still be going till midnight or 1:00 AM?
Potentially, yes.
Like you stop the alcohol service and then you're cleaning up, people are leaving and.
According to, could be a difference, yes. According to this, you could stay open until 1:00 AM. But because of the application, they don't let, probably reverse it knowledge. But if they come and ask for administrative consideration, we agree that it's safe to stay open till 1:00. At least two degrees. Every year in the past, past few years, this will make it more proper than what's.
So backed up by ordinance that we can do that. We were letting that happen before it really wasn't. Correct.
An example, the other example would be that, you know, there's the car show that happens every year. They serve beer every year. Our hours have been noon, but the show starts at 10:00 and they're serving beer. Our ordinance never allowed it, but it's always been done. So as you, you know, that's, this is just kind of a cleanup thing. It's kind of adjusting it to, to what common practice has been and trying to make it so that people aren't operating outside of our ordinances.
Yes.
Any, any questions about this or any other discussion? Do you guys feel comfortable moving forward with this?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Carl Palmasano is here. Is there something that he could lend to the conversation or clarification?
No, I don't think there is.
I'll, I remember, like I said at the last meeting, your ordinance trumps the state's license. From what I've saw, the state, they can let me serve 24 hours to rebuild ordinance. So that's why I think President Mike wants to change the ordinance to the 1:00 AM. Shouldn't we have an overflow of customers on that event?
And it's, and just to be clear, Mr. Palmasano, you have no intention of, of advertising that you are going to, that you, it's your intention to stay open till 1:00 AM, correct?
Our intention is to stay open till midnight to see how sales go. If it needs to go to an extended F hour, you'd be the first one out of it.
I, I, with that, I will entertain, unless there's any other questions.
You're going to have to last to one. Even if the intent is to stop at noon, why wouldn't you just apply for the license to one? Why still go through backdoor channels to make phone calls to try to stay open later? If we're saying it's 1:00 AM, just have the application.
Because you have to change ordinance so the application can match order.
But that's what we're talking about right now is the ordinance. So if the ordinance was submitted, we're saying we're not planning to be open till midnight. The liquor application can be different than what your operating hours are. It just can't be longer. So rather than needing to make phone calls, put in the application, tell one if this passes.
I think what the mayor is saying is he doesn't want it advertised. It's going to be open till one. Is it going to have to two?
It's on a recorded meeting now. So I, I, I get that. I'm not saying put it on the sign. What I'm saying is you can still advertise midnight. And then you have the option, if you need to, that the license was already told one if you needed to, but you're advertising. That's my, my, in your avoiding meeting to call you at midnight or call the mayor at night or whoever it is.
I think at this point, we would still like to have an administrative decision to, to allow it to be open later.
I disagree with that. If we're going to change ordinance till 1:00, he don't need to call anyone. He's got it till 1:00. He doesn't need to call him. Or you, or you, or you, or you. He don't have to call anybody.
Now, here, if, to, to what Mr. Hedges is saying is, so that, and like, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schuster, Mr. Mr. Palmasano would need to reapply for the license after we pass this, correct? And we would have to reissue him a license with the hours at one AM because his original application said midnight. Is that true?
Yes. I mean, you, you could amend his license based on him filing an amended application. Yes.
So in order, but so as far as this year is concerned, Mr. Palmasano has two options. He needs to file a, an amended application for one AM, or he would have to make that phone call to Mr. Hedges or myself as liquor commissioner to say, stay open till one, correct?
His license is till midnight. He needs to shut down at midnight.
Right.
Okay. All right. I just want to be clear. Okay. Thank you. So, uh, that being said, if this ordinance passes, the liquor commission will meet at six thirty on the fourth, which is preceding the board meeting, uh, it should, Mr. Palmasano, apply for, amend his license application. Is that a fair assessment? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion about this?
No.
I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen, an ordinance modifying the alcohol, uh, alcoholic liquor regulations for special event licenses.
So move. Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Palastini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Motion passed six zeros.
Uh, before Mr. Hedges continues, Ms. Clerk, will you let us, let the liquor commission know if Mr. Palmasano, uh, submits a amended liquor application?
Would you let the?
Oh, yes.
If he's.
Yes.
And if, and if there's an application that comes in, we'll meet before the next board meeting.
Okay. Got it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we would ask for, uh, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of three police squads to Vito Enterprises Inc. in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. I believe you have a, an agenda supplement, uh, from Miss Lyons in your packet. If you have any questions, you'd be happy to address them.
Chief, this is an easier process than using the village credit card and putting it up on eBay and managing the sale?
Absolutely. We didn't say.
Well, uh, Chief, isn't, uh, what, isn't, uh, you selling the squads on eBay the reason that we got one of the credit cards to begin with? Is that an accurate statement as well?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Just to let the board know on some history there. Does anybody have any questions about the ordinance that's presented? I'll entertain a motion authorizing the sale of three police squads to Vito Enterprises in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, which is ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, uh, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Palastini?
Um, hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Motion passed six zeros.
Thank you. Now, with this, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we're gonna, next, we're gonna go into a public hearing regarding the proposed special service area number twenty-eight. Ms. Clerk, can you bang the gavel? We are now in the public hearing.
Mr. President, it's been customary to call for a motion and vote to open the public hearing, uh, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, she already banged the gavel, so I'll call the motion. I'll entertain a motion to enter the public hearing.
Go move.
Questions, comments? Okay, uh, Ms. Clerk, I guess you have to call the roll now, I suppose.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Palastini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Okay, you get to bang it again. Okay, we're in the public hearing now.
May I, uh, just for the record, Mr. President, uh, state that a notice to this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald newspaper on June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this is, uh, and, and notice was also mailed to the, uh, owners of record of the property. Uh, this is the, uh, property that, uh, the, the lead development is the storage facility, uh, east of State Street and south of Allen Road. There's some additional property in that subdivision. Uh, it, there is a detention area sort of in the middle. Uh, it's, uh, proposed and, uh, in accordance with, uh, the village code and county code, a backup special service area is required. The owner will have primary responsibility to maintain this, uh, detention of, of stonewalled facility. Uh, and, uh, there will be a special service area put on the books to provide a taxing mechanism to come up with money necessary, to do the necessary maintenance if the owner fails or refuses to do that in future. Sir, I want you, Mr. President, to speak to this issue. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, and explain the special tax. Please.
I'm sorry?
Explain, uh, is the special tax for a certain area or is it for?
It's for the, it is for a certain, it's for the area comprising the subdivision.
Who pays the special tax?
The owner.
Okay.
Uh, and that, that would be successor owner. So if it's sold, if lots are sold to someone else, they would be subject to this, uh, requirement. Uh, at this time, it's all under the ownership of Houston Parkway LLC. And, uh, they would be repaid. The Houston Parkway is responsible to maintain it. And if they don't, then the properties involved would be subject to the taxation uh, in order to provide funding to reimburse or pay for the maintenance that's required.
If I could correct, just, just, it's a scribbler's thing, but, um, on page thirty-two of the packet, which, um, which is the ordinance that we passed last time, ordinance twenty-two dash twelve-nine. On page thirty-two, we have the wrong date for the hearing. Um, that would be now there, now there for the, for day blah, 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 one. Area one, it should be July twenty-first, not July twentieth. Everything else is fine and, and the public notice and the record and everything in the Daily Herald is fine, but I just hope we might want to correct that.
Well, that ordinance already passed.
I know, it's signed and everything else, but I just have wanted to bring it to light.
In the meantime, all the notices and whatnot have gone out from the twenty-third.
That's what I said. It's a, it's a scribbler's thing.
Realized that in preparing for proceedings. But, uh, I can't type right.
No, of course. It was the ordinance and, you know, I understand it's passed.
It wasn't.
As long as the date is correct, the Daily Herald notice and the actual, I'm good with it. I just wanted to see if you needed to correct that.
Okay, do we have any other questions, comments, concerns about this property?
It seems to be everything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do I need to take them? Do I need to? Do I make a motion to do that?
Yes.
So move. Second.
Questions, comments? We'll call, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hey.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Palastini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Motion passed six zeros.
Hey, uh, now you can bang the gavel and we'll close the special, uh, public hearing.
It's been done.
Great.
That, uh, Chief Thompson, would you like to?
Your report briefly, please.
Uh, looking back over the past several months, they all seem pretty consistent. Nothing is jumping on the pages. Uh, traffic is up. Uh, even though the, uh, structures out there are, uh, suspended and, and overweight, sir. It'll be a little bit better of a, a high this month other than what you said was last month.
You know, questions, uh? Mr. Paulson? Engineering reporter?
Yeah, if there's any questions, obviously, the highlight is that, you know, the State Street, uh, is opened up. Um, there's additional work that will happen. Uh, the streetlights will be in in September. Landscaping will be done in September when, uh, when the weather is more appropriate.
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, the only thing I got, uh, the white striping on the concrete, uh, when that wears off in about six months, is that, is that a warranty item?
Uh, to check the, uh.
Great, don't worry. Trustee Coth, I spoke with, uh, I spoke with Kurt about that today, Tim. I think there's some, asking about which appropriate color might be appropriate for parking, since that concrete is so new and it's hard to see the white lines.
I, I was just gonna say, somebody that's hard to differentiate colors, it's somebody pointed it out and I'm like, wait, there's.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we choose the right color. This yellow would not be the right color. We're working on a way for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
And just one other comment about, uh, striking. Uh, we use the, I'm sorry, I don't remember the terminology. Josh knows perfectly well, are they?
Yeah, for asphalt, it's thermoplast and for concrete, you're supposed to use a much more expensive material called polyurethane, polyurethane, polyurethane.
So we talked about that briefly. Um, and when we had to go to the less expensive spec, we went to paint because the materially put on concrete is like four times as expensive as the material you put on asphalt, which we can actually do ourselves.
It's gonna last any longer anymore.
Right.
So the lines that are down, besides if the color changes, are the final lines.
Yes, that was according to this guy. Again, but as I said, we have our own equipment. It's pretty easy for our guys to go out there and paint. So we'll probably do that ourselves.
I, I did have some questions from residents. Is the cement supposed to be red and not that orange color?
You mean the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. It actually is, it's the color it's supposed to be.
Yeah, people order the impression it was gonna be red.
Well, there are gonna be red papers across the crosswalk. Those are not in yet. That's gonna bring a lot of color to this.
Okay.
All three of the crosswalks will have red papers. Uh, they're not real papers, but they're sort of like these. This is actually a facade for, um, Rose Garden building, but it's very similar to this. There'll be raised and there will be mortar lines in between. I think it's gonna look real nice. It's sort of a, uh, not too bright red brick.
Thank you.
We thought about purple brick. Shows not too bad. Didn't know how long purple would last here. Probably forever. Any other questions about streets, yes?
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments. It's, uh, it had been brought to our attention by a couple of different people. Um, the like the sewer grates and, uh, water manholes and that type are really super old and dirty. And they wanted to know if those were gonna be cleaned. Cause everything else is.
You mean they're rusty?
Yeah, they're like rusty and old looking. So they thought maybe if they were power washed or saved or something.
They come right from the factory like that.
Yeah.
You can go up right to Nina Foundies right now and every single one they have in their lot, which are thousands, they're all rusty.
The rest just gets eventually wears off and then you have that used to see.
Yes, sir.
So those aren't the original ones that we had and we pulled them out?
These are their ones.
They are. That surprised me. Okay, that's fine.
If, if I could just, uh, ask everyone, if you could have less talk in the room, so the American here, please.
The other, uh, comment was with the white concrete, um, where the roads are, leave it on the sidewalk. It just, it opened and even I think some of the videos that I saw, it's, you could see all this dirty pavement and skid marks and all kinds of stuff on it. And I thought, when that was the first day it was open and I didn't know if that's gonna just look like that all the time with.
Well, eventually that green is not gonna be brand new anymore and it'll get wear and it'll look.
Okay.
Yeah, anytime you put down brand new white concrete, it's gonna kill.
Okay, cause it just looked like kids' bikes, just.
Five minutes, a kid went right down the sidewalk, skidded his back tire and Dave Scare was really mad.
Okay. So it wasn't just me, it was Dave Scare too. Okay, that's what I, okay. All right. Um.
And obviously that's brand new asphalt that you're driving over. So some of that asphalt's gonna tear up.
Um, I, I walked it yesterday and was looking through it. I wasn't clear where the clock is going to go.
The clock is going to go on where the orange cone is, right in front of James Motors. There's an orange cone, all the powers there, everything's right there.
Okay.
And among the papers, we have that wire where the papers are.
Okay. I didn't see the papers, that's fine.
Yeah.
Maybe because.
It's right in, there's an orange cone. In fact, that orange cone's been there for years. It was covering up a tree stump before. But now it's covering up the base where they want.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions about that?
Any other questions?
At this point, I think we'd ask for a motion to approve the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two accounts payable personnel.
Anybody have any questions about this high dollar amount? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable to personnel for the total of a hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So move.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a second.
You got it.
You got it.
Okay, Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Palastini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Motion passed six zeros.
Thank you. I would ask for.
The big one.
The July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two regular accounts payable in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Do we have any questions about the big one?
On page forty-nine, the Brannick Communications Batteries, I'm assuming of their first, for the science, got it?
All solar.
Got it. So they. Got it. And that resolves the issue.
So move.
At this time.
Any other questions tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, on page fifty-four, um, emergency dispatch services for Kane County Government Center, and that's a hundred and seven thousand six. That's our annual, sorry.
That's our annual nine-one-one service to Kane County Dispatch Service.
Okay, for the entire year?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to know with the trees unlimited, and I, I know that was a huge amount, and that just dealt with all storm damage, so I thought maybe even just what kind of damage that we had other than trees down with those big storms? I don't know if anyone can comment on that?
It is trees, yes.
Just trees?
Yeah. Um, we've had a lot of areas damaged and, um, fallen into the roadway and so we, we moved those. Um, our street department guys will do a lot of the work themselves unless they're like giant trees. And so, yeah, these are all very large trees.
Okay, so the little ones we take care of and it's just, I mean, I know it was a bad storm, so it just is a really, it's a high amount of money, that's why. And then the last question, also that page sixty-one, Tyler Technologies, the annual S A A S V, is that our new?
So that's the brand new Tyler, um, encode product that we're implementing. Uh, we did start our stage one implementation calls. So the very first bill that we received, um, actually was in the part, uh, not sure what the third part is, but maybe it's combined. Um, we are paying our annual fee and started it. That's what I thought it was, but I haven't. That's, that is the, uh, end of my questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Palastini?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Motion passed six zeros.
Thank you all.
Okay, now I have village board committee reports. First up is the Business Development Commission. Mr. Kelly, did you, uh, want me to handle it in your absence?
No, I will go ahead and cover. Thank you. Uh, so the BDC met last week, uh, on their agenda, they discussed the updates of the downtown streets, street skate project, where village president Reed mentioned that the progress was going nicely and that was set to open. We're still planning the ribbon cutting ceremony prior to concrete days. Uh, and so everybody was pretty happy about that. The second item discussed was a facade program application for the owners of one, two, three Washington Avenue. Uh, there was a discussion, uh, based on the recommendation out of beautification committee, uh, to the BDC and the BDC is making a recommendation that will be brought to the board in the next board meeting. Is my. recommendation that will be brought to the board in the next board meeting, is my understanding. There was also discussion around the remaining strategies and the long-term plan. And so that was tabled till the next meeting, where we'll continue to, to discuss that and then eventually bring it to the board. They, of course, talked about the Hampshire very own schedule. And as everyone knows, that's how we recognize local businesses, help tell their stories. It's a great issue to handle. And then finally, updates to newer existing businesses. Jimmy Sports Bar has a new owner and they received their liquor license. So that establishment's going to be called Harps Lounge. The strip mall that's slated for 72 west of Casey's is making motion and looks like it may be ready to break ground soon, which is good news. I think that's well on, I mean, Ron Key and 72, the development plans would be presented to planning and zoning later this month. I'm guessing still later this month or maybe August, since later this month is next week, Monday. So Monday, I guess, Thursday meeting. Project Yukon has grown to 220 acres, so that project keeps getting bigger and bigger. And the property being considered as a prior, rest of the subdivision, we just had a presentation of whole dominion, real ownership that's coming to present. Then the Hampshire Logistics Park had its engineering finalized and it's coming closer to the final proposal to the board. The, the other thing discussed, Village Assistant to the Village Manager, Josh Ray, presented that the village has looked into the opportunity of adding electric car chargers. It's something we talked about with the street skateboard that can help draw people in as a destination. So they're waiting for some more companies to be vetted and pricing to be looked at before regulations. Any questions for BDC? All right, thank you.
Public relations.
All right. We met last Thursday, just, I'll reach out just for our next meeting, which will be August 11. We essentially talked about what's gonna go in your newsletter. So if there's something that you're not seeing in the newsletter that you'd like to see, please reach out to me and let me know so that we can put that on our agenda. So we included upcoming events and don't forget, please, that we have a new elementary school opening up August 16th. So please make sure to welcome all of our Big Temper Elementary students, parents, families, teachers, staff, bus drivers, et cetera. We're very excited that they'll be in our community. Other than that, I guess you'll just have to wait until your newsletter comes out. So. The end.
Hey, Public Works?
I report.
Ms. Palastrey, budget?
Yes, we are, we've set a meeting for the Budget Committee of August 1st at 5:30 P.M. We would like a discussion of us, about a suggested process to address applications for the facade grants that go above and beyond the budget allocations. We'd just like to have a process in place to not exceeding the budget. And the committee will discuss that in that meeting.
I thought that meeting was canceled.
August 1st?
Yeah.
I had a cancellation actually also, but it came in before the actual meeting. So I accepted the meeting.
There's a, there's another invitation out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that new one.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. Any new business or other announcements? Okay. Nothing? All right. Well, then I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right, can I, Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Palstrey?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Thank you.